Call meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. I know you're used to seeing Frank County here, but he's away. For our meeting for June 24th, we have a message from Linda Westergaard. And Linda, would you like to stand or sit?
No, you can sit. It doesn't, you don't have to stand. "God, thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for our beautiful community and for the firefighters and police officers who keep us safe. Thank you for all the city workers who make our parks vibrant, our streets clean, and our city government function smoothly. As we come together tonight as a city council, may we listen carefully and speak thoughtfully to each other and to those who come before us. Guide our decisions so the actions we take will make our city even better. Amen."
Amen. Thank you, Linda. I'll ask a clerk to take roll call.
Coleman?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Mayor, are you on the line? We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Does the voice vote or?
Yeah.
All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay. Item three, I don't have the...
Right there in front of you.
Thank you. Item three is approving the consent agenda, items three through forty-nine. Those items are going to be voted on in one vote without any objections unless somebody comes forward. Right now, we have item four I, four T, four D D, four F F, four J J, and four K K. Councilmember Coleman votes no. Item four S, Councilman Gatto votes conflict of interest. And item five, Councilmember County votes no. Is there anybody in the audience that has any item that they would like to hear in the consent agenda? Hearing none?
I'll move approval of their consent.
Oh, I accidentally hit the wrong one. Sorry.
Can you reset it?
Aye. Mandelbaum votes aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Six yes.
Okay. It moves us. Haven't been this far along in a long time, so I'm going into new territory here.
Trying to move it along for you.
Thank you. Item fifty is ordinance first consideration. It's amending chapter one fourteen of the municipal code regarding snow routes. Council communication number nineteen dash two seventy-six. A final consideration of ordinance above waivers requested by the city manager requires six votes.
Move.
Fifty and fifty-eight.
Mandelbaum votes aye.
Fifty and fifty-eight.
Yep. Always got to be so technical, Joe.
There you go.
Six yes.
Moving on, council communications and reports. Item fifty-one from Stuart Cott, thirty-nine thirty-seven Columbia Street to speak regarding enforcement of fireworks ordinance. Is he here today? Step right on up. Didn't think you'd be here this fast, did you?
I didn't pick quite enough of these. Some of you might have to share those.
Move to receive and file.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, a couple of years ago, a barred owl and his mate moved into our neighborhood. Beautiful animal, almost a four-foot wing spread. That following winter, the lower left-hand picture, I went out to shovel snow in winter and found that tableau in my driveway. And I was pretty sure what it was from the wing feather marks and the disturbed snow, but I Googled barred owl pouncing, and believe it or not, you can get a ton of pictures of a barred owl pouncing. And that's what those other two pictures are. Last year, on the Fourth of July, both those owls disappeared. I thought they were gone for good, but they weren't. They did manage, they came back late last spring. They're not quite in our neighborhood. Every once in a while, I see them in my tree, but they've taken home somewhere else. It's just not too often we get a chance to see wildlife, other than mountain lions, maybe, inside the city limits. As a citizen, I'm not really allowed to pick and choose the laws that I think I should obey. By the same token, the people who enforce those laws should not be allowed to pick and choose which ones they want to enforce. I probably have quite a reputation with the police department for calling in about the fireworks. I wouldn't have quite so much of a problem with the fireworks if people were reasonable when shooting them off. But instead of doing their fireworks, they drag them out three or four every five or ten minutes, fifteen minutes, till two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning sometimes. They do that for two reasons, I'm sure. One is to make the fireworks last longer, and the other is, if somebody calls the police, they're not shooting off fireworks when the police come around. After the police have gone by, they can shoot fireworks off again. It just, when they changed the ordinance to allow people to buy fireworks here, it just made it easier for people to do that. It used to be a good three-hour trip down to the Missouri Line, buy the fireworks, and then drive back. A lot of people didn't want to go to that much trouble. Now you've made it really easy for them. And like I say, I wouldn't have a problem if they would shoot them off on the Fourth of July. They're supposed to be celebrating our country's birthday. But they start, they've already started, I've already called the police four or five times. And it'll continue most of the rest of the summer, off and on. And I just think that we need to either, one, I really don't want you to dispense with the ordinance because, you know, people are taking advantage of it, and, you know, it's tough on fellow veterans that have post-traumatic stress syndrome. Fortunately, I don't, but I know some who do. And this kind of thing, just, it's really tough on them because, you know, they get flashbacks and stuff like that. So I just, I'd like to see something, if the police, I told them last year when I called, and I had video evidence, I can understand the position, well, if we didn't see him breaking the law, we can't issue him a citation. But last year, I took a video of the guy across the street with my phone, and I showed it to the officer, and he walked across, talked to him, and he came back, and he said, "Well, they said they were done now." So he didn't write him a citation. Can you imagine how that would work with a bank robber? Oh, this is my last robbery officer, I'm not doing it anymore. It really wouldn't work that way. So I just, I think that, I told them, all you have to do is issue five or six or seven or so. If word gets around, word will get around that you are going to enforce this. And, because right now, word is around, they know they're not going to. They made a big publicity announcement last year, and over five hundred complaints from the north side of Des Moines, and they didn't issue a single citation. And I think there's just something wrong, you know, with that many people complaining, that something can't be done. So I think, you know, I don't know, really, this was the place to bring this issue, but at least that's where I'm going to start.
Just a quick comment. So you know how many calls that our police officers handle? Not, not on the Fourth or not about any fireworks?
I suspect it's quite numerous, especially on weekends, on Friday and Saturday.
Anytime. They're backed up anytime. Now, compound that to what the state did and allow fireworks to be sold in the state of Iowa. So now, we're going to put it on the police department to enforce a law that it's able to buy them here.
Kind of a catch twenty-two.
And they're inundated with the phone calls, definitely on the Third, the Fourth, and if it's on a weekend before, the weekend before. So, I mean, I think that our officers do a fantastic job of, you know, with what they have and the means that they have, I mean, they're trying to do everything, but I would challenge you to go ride in a ride-along with them, not in July or June, but how busy they are, as it is right now.
I totally understand that.
But I appreciate what you're saying.
I don't understand when presented with video evidence and the remains in the driveway, it's right there. And they were already there, it's not like, you know...
I get it.
And I've told them, you know, I'll be a witness, I'll testify if that's necessary because you didn't see them shoot them off, but I did.
I think sometimes maybe we just need to tell our neighbors, "Hey, can you stop shooting them off at eleven o'clock, and can we just be good neighbors so I can go to sleep?" Maybe just talking to some of our neighbors and getting out together and being a neighbor and saying, "Hey, this really bothers me, you know, maybe we shouldn't be doing this this late at night, I understand." Or maybe you shouldn't drag it on for eight hours because it gets real annoying to me. Maybe some things like that could be helpful if our whole community did that, not just you. But we're going to have this problem until July, probably eighth, now that the weekend is July fourth, in the middle of the week. So I'll move to receive and file his comments.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments because you live in the ward that I represent.
I'm sorry?
You live in the ward that I represent, and I just wanted to let you know that in your neighborhood, there's a new neighborhood-based service delivery officer, and she is really, really good about visiting with residents. And I know that we have your email because you send an email to receive or to speak. So if it's okay with you, I'm going to visit with her about your concerns, and I'll ask her to reach out to you. And maybe there is something, you know, I mean, I've been told that if you record it and you're willing to testify that something, you know, it's possible that something could be done. So I'm going to put you in contact with Officer Schwartz.
Thank you. That would be good.
So expect that call if that's okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I want to thank you for poaching our fine Officer Schwartz from the west side.
I was going to say, fireworks already started in my neighborhood.
You have one of the best. She is really good, so I think you'll have a good conversation with her.
Yeah, I can work with her on that because it's been my experience that sometimes direct confrontation with the person, it doesn't work.
Yeah, we don't want you to...
You know, they're of a mind to celebrate the Fourth of July, and it's their right to celebrate the Fourth of July, and anybody who doesn't want...
Correct. And like Joe said, you can have confidence that everybody sitting up here, we were not looking forward to the fireworks ordinance, and we really worked hard to say, "No, we're not going to allow them to be sold in parking lots, and they can only be in certain zoning districts, M1," and the state legislature's the one who made that law. So I encourage you to reach out to your state representatives and talk to them about what a mistake they made, in my opinion, with passing this fireworks.
I know the first year, they had a time limit, that it was legal, the first year.
Yeah, we changed that.
I was right, you changed that because it didn't work because nobody paid any attention to the time limit, so... Well, thank you very much for your...
Mr. Cott, thank you for coming in. It's been moved to receive and file. Please vote.
Six yes.
Item fifty-two is from Michael Patrick Doyle, sixty-two oh one Franklin Avenue, to speak regarding tiny homes, homeless camps, and homelessness in Des Moines. Mr. Doyle here? Do you have motion to receive and file?
I'd like to speak about the tiny homes if possible.
Um, can we? Okay.
You want to see if they're outside?
Probably less than that.
You're my hero.
Thank you.
You bet.
Terry Wells, eleven fifty-seven Fourteenth Place, Des Moines, Iowa. There's been a lot of discussion about these tiny homes, and we got one in Cheaton Park from Joppa. We had a great event there, several of the councilmen were there. I've also had some discussions with Josh about some of the new square footage rules that we're putting in, and I really believe that these tiny homes can be a great benefit to our city. They'll be great to help eradicate some homelessness, but I think on the other end, when folks start to retire and settle down and the kids are out of the house, these tiny one-bedroom spots are great for widowers or, you know, couples. And we could take some of the blighted properties and some of the vacant lots and really, you know, get things back on our tax base, for one. And the home, if you've got a chance, it's up there on Thirteenth and right by St. Paul. It's a beautiful home, and they've done some nice landscaping, and I just, I really believe this is an advantage that we need to really look into, promote, and figure out how to turn what some folks think these camps might be a negative. Let's build some of these small homes and see what can happen. It may not solve everything, but I think it's a great first step, and it's kind of reaching out and saying, "Look, if this is going to help eradicate, help veterans, help elderly, I think we need to concentrate and see how we can incorporate the tiny homes." Thank you for the extra couple of minutes.
You bet, Terry, thank you. Did I get a motion to receive and file?
I'll move to receive and file Terry's comments and the request to speak. I'll move through. I don't think my mic was on. I'll move to receive and file Terry's comments, thank you.
All of it. You can take a voice vote on it. Alls in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Item fifty-three is from Joe Grandinette, sixty-two fifteen Gordon Avenue, to speak regarding DMU, one-cent sales tax, streets and sewers. You're onstage, Joe.
Yes, sir. Joe Grandinette, sixty-two fifteen Gordon Avenue, I'm here with my daughter, baby daughter, Rosina. I'd like to address, how did the city of Des Moines let DMU get away from us? Since the year 2000, according to the paper, they wanted to expand with a parking lot, and several houses didn't like it. No one put a plan together. They're a major, major, major contributor of the community, DMU, and now they're in West Des Moines. I don't understand how that could ever have happened. Someone should have got the leaders of the city of Des Moines and made this happen. I am, that's, it's a tragedy that we've lost them to West Des Moines. Next, the one-cent sales tax. On the record, I voted no. I voted no because I know that there's plenty of money for the city of Des Moines to fix the potholes and the sewers in this city. Furthermore, it was legal to do this. You asked us to vote on a Tuesday, but then on by Friday or Saturday, we got our assessments from this county, and our values of our home went up ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. What we would save in a one-cent sales tax, we surely lost in the values of our homes being appraised anywhere. Mine was appraised seventeen thousand dollars more. I can't imagine what bigger and better homes than mine were appraised at. That was a conspiracy. If that vote was, if that vote came after we got that in the mail, it would have never passed. It would have never passed. The streets and sewers. I did my homework last night, I drove south of Grand. There's one place there that you could put the whole car through. I drove off of fifty-six, and these houses are three hundred and fifty to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Potholes all over. I don't understand why we can't get these fixed. You voted to put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars about last October because I was here to put in a bike path on the north side. You put in five hundred thousand dollars on the south side for a bike path, and you can't fix the streets and the sewers. It's unfortunate. You know, we have a covenant here, the taxpayers of the city of Des Moines, through their sales tax when they purchase things, and their property taxes. We give this to you as a council people to make good decisions. That's a covenant. We can't say, "No, we're not going to pay our property taxes." You get it, because that comes with our house. And every time we buy something, you get the money. So you've broken your promise to fix the streets and the sewers, and has there ever been a plan? Has there ever been a plan to fix the streets and sewers in this town? It's after the fact. We need to fix them expeditiously. The homeowners are counting on it. The homeowners count on this, they have their whole life invested in their house. Joe, would I say something?
Only when you're done.
Okay. I'm not quite done yet.
I know you're not. I can tell.
How much time is left, ma'am?
One minute, thirty seconds.
Thank you. I'm here as a concerned citizen. It's very difficult for many, many people to come up here because of retribution. Their jobs, they're afraid, they never speak in front of people. They just say, "Well, that's the city council, that's the state legislature, that's the county supervisor." They're afraid to come up here. They're afraid to come up and speak in front of the public. But I, that has never questioned me. So I have to take this into my hands. I've taken out the nomination papers to run for mayor in November, and I will see what I can do. Joe, I'm all done. Would you like to speak?
Have you drove around the south side?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. See how many streets are tore up?
I understand. I'm not talking about the torn up street, I'm just talking about regular streets that need to be fixed with potholes.
Okay.
Have you, I've driven around the whole area. Fact of the matter is...
A lot of streets need to be fixed full pot. A lot of streets need to be repaired, Joe.
Yes, and my question is, do you have a plan?
Yeah, we have a, we, yeah.
So why are they in this position right now? It's just not like it's one street like Fluor. You could say every major thoroughfare needs to be redone. Every major, and aside streets are left behind, you could go side streets on the east side. There's a couple of east side streets that you can't, I don't know how the people survive. They lose their front end. Oh, and I've called in, I want to know why Glendale Cemetery cannot be fixed. If you go through the exit on Forty-Eighth Street, people have cones in there, cones, so that you don't go into the pothole. I'm done, Joe. You can take over now.
I'm, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody take a motion to receive and file?
I'll move to receive and file.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Aye.
Item fifty-four from Harry Schnackel, thirty-eight fifty-one Sage Street, to speak regarding change to type of trailer allowed for dumping yard waste at the Harriet Street facilities. Mr. Shackler here?
He was here earlier. I see, I wonder if he's outside.
I'll move to receive and file that request.
All right. Alls in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Aye.
Item fifty-five from Sterling Swank, twenty-nine twenty-five Battle Bureau, to speak regarding noise violations near student housing at Drake.
That one's withdrawn.
Oh, withdrawn? Okay. All right. All right, got one more. Let's go. Item fifty-seven. Item regarding appeal of Technology Management Corporation of the RFP Evaluation and Selection Committee recommendation for award of contract for information technology assessment and roadmap consultant services to Light Edge Solutions, Inc. Council Communication number nineteen dash two seventy-four. A is affirming the hearing officer's report, which overruled the appeal, and approving the award of the contract to Light Edge Solutions, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract. Or B, overruling the hearing officer's report, which overruled the appeal, and rejecting the committee's recommendation and directing the committee to reconvene to reevaluate the proposals. Is there anybody here to speak on this?
I'll move fifty-seven A.
Fifty-seven A.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six yes.
Get one more. Item fifty-eight is the Post Bid General Contractor Quality Assurance questionnaire policy. Anybody here to speak on that?
I'll move item fifty-eight.
I'll compliment Joe on this, but also a shout-out to Pope County that has kind of tested this, and at least we have some framework as we move forward.
And it's all about giving quality to the work that gets done in the city of Des Moines. Pleased to see that, Joe, your work is irreplaceable on this, I sure appreciate that. So it's...
Just want to make sure that we're spending our money the right way.
That's right. We get the longest benefit out of it.
Depending on how all this road construction goes, we might be looking at doing things for road construction, too.
Love it.
This is everything, it's the larger projects, correct?
Yeah. So I just, little fair warning to our legal department.
Josh?
We'll see how the season goes.
Yeah, I think this is great. I support, support it, appreciate your work on this, Joe, and agree that it's worth looking at this for our road construction as well. So I vote, I vote aye.
Six yes.
All right, I see it's five o'clock. We're going to move to hearings. First is item sixty-two. On approval of documents for conveyance of excess city-owned property located north and adjoining six oh one Kenyon Avenue to Michaela D. Sloan and Caleb Sloan, one hundred dollars. Is there anybody here to speak on that?
I'll move item sixty-two.
Josh?
I vote aye. Yes.
Six yes.
Item sixty-three. On approval of documents for conveyance of excess city-owned property adjoining twenty-five oh nine Sunset Road to the Jan Miller Straub Revocable Trust, seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Is there anybody here to speak about that?
If there's no one to speak, I'm happy to move item sixty-three.
Okay.
And I vote yes.
Six yes.
Item sixty-four. On honorary naming of a segment of Rollins Street between Forty-first and Forty-second Street to the name of John Veer's Street. Anybody here to speak on that? Come right up.
My name is David Kilpatrick, and I live at six oh five Eleventh Street in West Des Moines, but I'm the executive director of Des Moines Community Playhouse. And this is a... And this is a request for John Veers. He's been serving the city of Des Moines and the community playhouse for thirty-seven years, and he's retiring, um, this year. And this section of the road is a very small little road right in front of the theater, and we just wanted to give him an honor for his lifetime contribution to both the playhouse and the region.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Anybody else? It's been moved?
I know that you've made this request at one time.
Yes. Yes, I would like to move item sixty-four.
Josh?
I vote yes.
Item sixty-five. Items regarding requests from We Can Build It LC Jeff Young Officer regarding renovation of the existing Franklin Junior High School at forty-eight oh one Franklin Avenue, continued from the May twentieth, twenty nineteen meeting. Email batch one, email batch two, and email batch three. And what is that? I haven't seen that before. Anyway, A, to amend the existing planned DSM, creating out tomorrow plan for future use, future land use designation from neighborhood mixed use within a neighborhood node to community mixed use within a neighborhood node. B, hearing to rezon the property from limited C one neighborhood retail commercial to PUD, planned unit development. Six affirmative votes required for approval, but I think that's been changed. It's now-
Corrected one.
Okay. So B's out, okay. C, first consideration of rezoning ordinance above. D, final consideration of rezoning ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant. Six affirmative votes required for approval, and communication from Larry James Junior regarding Franklin Junior High rezoning. Anybody here to speak on that?
Mr. Mayor Protam, you have a question? Oh.
No, I'll get one.
Uh, can I get a show of hands? First of all, uh, about two things we need to, uh, how many people are here to support this, uh, project? Okay. How many people plan to speak? If you're gonna-
Yeah, I'll do it.
Uh, and if you spoke, keep in mind, if you spoke on the May twentieth meeting, uh, those are already in the record, so, uh, we don't need to repeat ourselves. So, uh, I see Larry and one, two, three people ready to speak? Good. Okay, Larry, your, your show.
Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council, Larry James Junior, eight oh one Grand, Des Moines. I'm here, uh, on behalf as the attorney for, uh, We Can Build It LC. Owner of that, uh, limited liability company is Jeff Young. Uh, Jeff is here along with, uh, several of the project team, uh, in the audience. If you have specific questions, I'm not unable to answer, but as you note, uh, I'm trying to keep this as brief as possible. We've heard a lot, uh, from the, uh, from the supporters and opponents already, uh, but, uh, so nonetheless, I think what we have, uh, right now is a, uh, a PowerPoint, a quick PowerPoint I'd like to run through with you. We're able to check that, uh, just, just upload that. Pull that up for us. If not, I can keep talking. Not a problem for me.
No way.
So, so, uh, we, as we spoke before, this is a, a project that's at the intersection of forty-eighth and Franklin in Des Moines. Uh, there we go. Uh, and I'll just try to click through this as we go. There we go. So this is a project at forty-eighth and Franklin in Des Moines. Uh, it used to be the former Franklin Junior High School, uh, then was the Des Moines Christian Academy as well as, uh, First Federated Church. Uh, one thing to note, this, this, this building has not been on the tax rolls since its, uh, construction, uh, as it's been several, uh, non, not-for-profit uses over the years. Uh, the proposal would put it, in fact, it already is back on the, the tax rolls, uh, and, uh, what you see on your screen there is essentially what the, uh, the project, uh, is today. We've got, uh, in, in a nutshell, one restaurant, uh, which is the former cafeteria, uh, one bar on the second floor is the former science lab, and we have three concession stands that would serve, uh, during, if you open only during the events at the facility. Uh, the facility has gymnasiums, uh, for community athletics and events, auditorium, school cafeteria and kitchen, um, locker rooms, which are going to be used, uh, as part of a, a hotel lobby, a thirty-room hotel. Uh, there is a, uh, monastery school office space, uh, there is a, a planned microbrewery for production only. Uh, we've got, uh, several other small performance venues, uh, and essentially, uh, a, uh, really a, a true mixed-use project. Pretty exciting, uh, for the, for the northwest side. Put the project in some context. Again, you've been through this already, but this is, uh, let's see if I can just, no, keep clicking through there. This is, uh, again, corner of, of forty-eighth and Franklin. You see there, uh, in the gray is the existing structure. Uh, there is, uh, the former Franklin Junior High, and then you see in the top left in the gray is the, uh, what used to be the First Federated Church facility. Parking on site, uh, we've counted, we have, as of today, about six hundred and eighty-eight spaces. Uh, the, uh, the parking required, uh, according to the square footage of the uses proposed and the, uh, calculations of rights by city staff is six hundred and fourteen spaces, uh, assuming we do need to meet, and we, we believe we do need to meet the new landscape requirements for parking, uh, lots, we, that, that would be reduced to approximately six hundred and sixty-eight spaces, leaving us a little over fifty-four spaces, uh, uh, more than is required by code. Uh, one of the things that was of concern to some of the neighbors as well as some council members was, uh, what initially was called the patio, which would be a outdoor patio to the, the restaurant. And what you see in the red is, uh, essentially, uh, the beginnings of a concept for what had, uh, what intends to be a, uh, an outbuilding, which is the larger outbuilding there, which will have, uh, a, a outdoor fireplace. Uh, the smaller, uh, building there is a restroom for outside use. And some of the images you see here are images taken from other facilities across, uh, the U.S., uh, many of them, uh, based on, uh, taken from a, a, a small chain in Oregon and Washington called McMenamins. They've taken schools and, and transformed them into this type of use. Uh, and, and some of the, uh, uses that we're proposing for this location now in attempt to really, I guess, uh, address what I hope addresses some of the concerns, uh, is looking at the, 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 really what right now is a, a, a park for a playground, right, as it sits today, um, is, is what we're trying to include playground space in this new concept. You can go ahead and- So this is the, the concept for the outdoor space, which we're proposing, calling it Franklin Garden. Uh, in, instead of merely like an outdoor deck or patio, which, uh, is essential, by the way, to some sort of structure for ADA purposes to get into the, the facility, uh, we are, uh, incorporating a play area, uh, open to the public. Uh, there are several, uh, decorative, uh, fences and pergolas surrounding the facility. Again, this is conceptual, but this will give you an idea of when we come back to you with the actual development plan, somewhat of what you'll see there. Click through there. This kind of gives you some idea. That's that outdoor fireplace. Uh, we've got, uh, pergolas. Uh, you can see some seating out there. Just to give you some better idea, this, the pergolas are incorporated into the fencing, really trying to make it something decorative, adding some landscaping, outdoor seating. And, uh, just to give you some context, that's looking essentially towards, uh, forty-eighth and Franklin from, uh, roughly where the, the main entrance is from, to the, uh, to the, to the hotel. See there, again, you see there's a, uh, the red chairs are seating for the, uh, for the restaurant. Teeter totter swings, that type of thing. And this is showing from, from forty-eighth street. What we try to show here is that the, the intent is to provide some screening, uh, some, some screenings, some solid surface, uh, to screen this use from, uh, the surrounding neighborhood, as well as adding landscaping to that screening. This is a, a shot from roughly what is the second floor of the apartments to the west. Uh, we've added some screening along the parking lot, but then you see in the distance there, that is the, uh, the approximate location of where this Franklin Gardens is located. This kind of gives you another aerial shot of that. Uh, this is, uh, a preliminary phasing, a timeline. One of the questions that came up, uh, last time, uh, which is a, a good question, is, is what is the project's phasing? This is a large project. It's going to take, uh, several years, but it's, can kind of give you an idea with some dates here, uh, assuming, uh, you know, we can, uh, this is the first hearing tonight. Ideally, we've asked for the second and third hearings to be waived for this, uh, rezoning. If that takes place and it kind of sets forth, uh, the site plan review, uh, again, coming back to council on or about September twenty-third, uh, and then having you guys look at and approve, uh, hopefully the, the development plan. And so it really gives, uh, uh, council another opportunity to look at this before construction begins.
So Larry, with that, can you go back to that?
Yep.
Just real quick?
Right.
Uh, the phasing?
Right.
With that, I mean, what's-
So phase one-
Where, where does that, I mean, how can we ever hold you to any of this?
You, it's, it's, you really can't.
Right.
I mean, I think the, the idea, uh, councilman is trying to give you some sense that this is the intent of the applicant.
Okay.
That the, that, you know, obviously, there's a lot of public attention to this.
Right.
Uh, you know, there's a lot of, uh, people that are excited about it. We want to give the, the public some idea that the intention at this point is to, is to, uh, really work on, uh, these things in order.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
So there's, you know, again, things happen, but at the same time, I think it's in no one's interest, including the applicants, to delay, uh, any of this activity. That's the idea.
Okay.
See, if you want to go ahead, and we can, we can discuss that more if, if necessary. Again, we came to, before you, before, uh, the, the applicant is not seeking, uh, public, uh, finance for this. We're not seeking, uh, tax abatement or any sort of TIF, uh, payments for this project. Uh, he's already, uh, paid approximately forty to fifty thousand dollars in property taxes to date on the property. Uh, and finally, I would, I guess what I wanted to say before I opened up to questions is some of the changes, I think, that were made, uh, very specifically to the PUD conditions from what we had before you previously. One of those, the first one being really clarifying the plan and zoning conditions, uh, regarding the location, uh, and square footages of various, uh, locations for alcohol sales on the site, uh, looking at the, the square footages of the, the hotel, the different uses, and making sure that it was very specific and clear in the conditions, uh, it was always the applicant's intent, but the, the conditions, I thought, were unclear. I didn't want to avoid any confusion. So we, we show there is a restaurant, uh, slash bar, it can have, uh, serve alcohol on the first floor. Uh, we've got one, um, full-time, uh, full-time, uh, a bar on the second floor, which is that, that science lab, about thirteen hundred square feet. Uh, and then the other three locations, uh, represent the, uh, the concession spaces that are going to be, uh, in operation only when, uh, there are events at those, those various spaces. Uh, another thing that we wanted to make sure to point out is that there, there had been some talk before about potential of this idea of not only having some hotel rooms, but also maybe, uh, a certain number of, of what we're calling hostel rooms. If those of you have traveled, uh, it's, those are places you have shared spaces and use a, a restroom down the hall. There was some concern there. We've gotten rid of those altogether. So it's simply a hotel, a full-service hotel, as you'd have with, uh, you know, the room service, the, uh, daily maid service, front hotel staff and, and all that. So it's, it's, hopefully to clarify some of those issues as well, to get past that. Uh, we talked about Franklin Garden. Things to show here is not only will the, the, will, not only will the, uh, service from the restaurant, uh, end, uh, outside at ten o'clock, the entire garden itself will be shut down to, uh, activity. So either folks have to go inside at that point or go home. So there will not be any activity past ten P.M. Uh, one of the, uh, concerns was the use of the large auditorium. Uh, we've, we've limited and we're committing to in the PUD, no more than eight events per month in the large auditorium shall extend past nine P.M., and such events must end no later than eleven P.M. Uh, there's outdoor alcohol sales to be limited to Franklin Garden, uh, only, except under city council resolution. Uh, so I can give you an example of that. So if someone wanted to, for example, uh, uh, move the Fall Festival to the parking lot, they would have to come back to council and ask specifically for a, a resolution of council to support that, uh, and, uh, to, um, allow the council to, uh, uh, to either vote for that or not. And, and, uh, so it really does give some, uh, ability to the council to, uh, to, to really, uh, uh, address whatever, uh, concerns you have about, uh, events in the, in the outside. Finally, there, uh, there is some concern about some of the, uh, the sound and, uh, outdoor amplified sound. What we're committing to in this PUD is there is, uh, no outdoor amplified sound except under two circumstances. Number one, uh, in Franklin Garden, uh, there can be a, essentially a background, uh, music, uh, in compliance with a type E sound permit, which is defined essentially as a, uh, sixty-five decibels at fifty feet. So someone talking, little, you know, rough, little louder than someone talking, it's not, it's not loud, uh, and, uh, they have to have a sound permit for that. Or, in the alternative, if they wanted to, uh, come back to you and say, hey, we'd like to have a band in the, uh, outside, uh, in the parking lot for an event, uh, that's only by city council resolution. It can't be just going to, uh, the permit development center pulling a sound permit. So it's, it's, uh, as I've been discussing with council, I do feel like, while the applicant can do many of these things currently, under the current zoning, having a PUD gives council the ability to really, um, address specific concerns. And I, and I do want to thank, uh, Councilman Coleman, Gray, Gatto, and all the rest of you for your continued support and helping us kind of bring these things together. I think, uh, working, uh, with you the last several weeks, uh, while, you know, it's always, uh, challenging to talk through some of this stuff, it's been very, I think, made a, a project that's much better, uh, it's going to be better for the neighborhood, and it's going to, uh, I think, uh, solve a large majority of the issues that council had and, and some of the neighbors had previously. So with that, I'll open up for questions.
Can you go back to that last slide? Because I didn't understand that time, the nine P.M. and then-
Right, right.
Such events no later than eleven. Is it nine or is it eleven?
So, so as it stands, if, uh, as, as it stands today, uh, if, if they wanted to have, you know, there's only, first of all, realistically, there's only a certain number of shows of that size that even come through Des Moines, Iowa.
Sure.
But say for sake of argument, there was one every single day, right? Say there was a, a four thousand-seat arena with shows every single day. Well, as it stands today, uh, that can, we can have those shows on site.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the thing that can't occur is, is still, I think, one of the reasons before you was, uh, um, you can't have, uh, serve alcohol at a concession stand, period, today, right? So the, the, the change that we've made is limiting the number of events and the time past nine P.M. So-
I just don't understand the, the time.
Confusing.
She, he, he could have a lot of events that lasted until nine.
Right. So say we have a, we have a, some sort of event in the, in the, in the large auditorium, but they've got to end before nine P.M.
Right now they do? Is that what you're saying?
No, no. Under this new, this new zoning, uh, PUD, what we would do is the eight events per month could, could go past nine P.M.
Oh, that one can go to, the eight events can go until eleven, but you can fill that place up every single day until nine o'clock.
Right.
If you had the option.
Theoretically, but there's-
I understand.
Yeah, theoretically, yeah. But what we're, what we're trying to do is, is say, look, to address the concerns that, uh, we don't want folks there till eleven o'clock every night of the week.
I understand.
You know, and so I think the, 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 the compromise has been, let's limit the number of events past nine P.M. And the reality is, it's not going to be that number of events, so.
Right.
This was probably my biggest issue.
No, I get it.
Um, and I, I think there's going to be events in there. Um, there's probably going to be Sunday morning events. I, I saw something, I think that my wife got about a women's church thing, you know, they, they, they can probably use that, I mean, they can use that, and they could today. I mean, today, there's no restrictions at all, which is, um, which is the give and take. Uh, we, we give them a liquor license, and we want to make sure that it, it functions in a way that, that meets the rest of the neighbors and the community and, um- a way that, that meets the rest of the neighbors and the community. And as I've told people, including developer and the concert promoters, I don't, I don't think in this neighborhood, we need a, you know, a concert factory. So restricting the number of nights that, that they can operate, you know, late, is really smart for the neighbors, and allows them to still have a, a cool business, so...
Any other questions for Larry? Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor Pro-Tim.
Kind of hard to spit that out, isn't it?
It's tough. Terry Wells, 1157 Fourteenth Street Place. And I, I want to quickly address three issues from the last meeting, and then add, add something at the end. But I, I know one of the concerns was, was knowing the plan. And I think we see here tonight that that plan's been now extended, and you can see some stuff into 2020. But, but what I want to make sure that the council understands is that we've had many things in this city that we didn't know every piece of the plan, and we don't always need to know every piece of the plan to move something forward one or two steps. For example, Hubble bought the Y and tore it down. We were going to have a hotel there, I, I believe, but now it's a federal courthouse. So we didn't know every step of that plan. Also Sixth Avenue, which I was on that board, ten years ago, we, we had a plan, but that didn't include changing the street lanes and the sidewalks and some of the improvements that are going on down there. The plan was to bring the community together and figure out what is wanted and what is next. So we didn't know what the corridor was going to do. Turned out great. We got a Hy-Vee over there on Douglas, over in your neck of the woods.
If, if you can find a Hy-Vee...
And we knew, we knew almost everything about that plan. We knew what kind of trees were going to be put in, where the, the drive-through is going to be at, and low and behold, there's a communication tower, and there's problems, and, 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 you know, we, we had Hy-Vees planned, but we still don't have a Hy-Vee. Finally, we had, had, had a, have a great skate park coming. And I, I was part of Amos, and I'm still part of Amos, but, you know, they, they had the great idea of the skate park. We didn't know it was going to turn out to be a world-class skate park when we first started passing different ordinances and different zoning stuff, and now we've got a world-class skate park. So I, I, I want you as a council to realize that this is a vision. And Jeff has a great vision, and he's got a board and people behind him, and I'm back here thinking, man, Franklin Avenue corridor, you can start at Merklin Way, and you've got the Retirement Village, you've got Amazing Grace Church, you've got the Community Center, the library, Franklin Plaza. Now Jeff comes in and is the cornerstone or anchor with the school and maybe the hospital. And it, you know, we probably, all of us, will not live long enough to see the final plan. But, think in your mind and be a visionary, and allow somebody the first couple steps tonight, so that this great plan can develop. The other two things I want to quickly talk about, and I'm going to title this Apples and Oranges. And there was some, some talk at the last meeting about some small neighborhood bars and, and restaurants, and how they do business, and, you know, Baratas is one of them, and we have them all over town. But, but they're surrounded by fifteen or twenty houses, and there has to be some respect and et cetera. But that's an apple. What Jeff has is an orange, okay? This is a huge, twenty times the footprint of a Baratas, or of a Sambadis, or of any other neighborhood bar. So it's not really fair to compare that small place with something that's already been a school, it's already been a church, it has a huge footprint, and, and again, we, we talk about respect of the neighbors. And I'm all about, everybody here knows I'm the community guy. I'm the one that's always fighting for the people. You have a vacant hospital, a vacant lot, a Franklin Plaza that years ago was very, I, I used to go to the grocery store, the pharmacy, and it's, it's not like the old Franklin Plaza. I'm hoping we can bring that back. You've got a few people in the apartment, and we need to respect that, but then we have a park, and I know Jeff's not going to bother the pigeons at the, on the tower. As a kid, I used to shoot some of those pigeons. I lived a block from that tower. So he's not going to bother the pigeons, and you've got a few people on 48. So I think we have to, again, the apples and oranges, it's, it's different. This is a huge project, and it's not, there's not that many neighbors. The, the other thing, and I think we all had the concern, and, and, you know, it, it bothered me also a little bit, but we, we have to think about, again, apples and oranges. Jeff is a landlord, has apartments and duplexes and houses, and sometimes tenants do things that are against code, and then the landlord and the tenant get into it and et cetera, and I'm not making excuses. What I'm, what I'm trying to say is, that's an apple. That's a residential. This is a corporate entity. He's got a board of directors. We have city inspectors. We have rules. People are going to be watching this more than a duplex. And, and so I, I think, again, apples and oranges. And certainly, the concern of following city rules is important. And if we know that that might be an issue, then I think we, we scrutinize. We don't stop the project, but we watch, and we make sure. So, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from. The, the last thing I want to say, I know my three minutes is about up.
Do you want to say Baratas one more time so you can continue, or what?
I could change personalities real quick, hold on. Dollars and cents, and I'm not talking pennies. I'm talking dollar bills and what makes sense. Our job as a city council, and as community people, and as concerned citizens, is about efficiency and citizen interest. Our job is to cut costs and make some money, and this would be a huge upgrade and improvement to our community, and it would put tax dollars in the city coffers. If we decide to demo it, leave it vacant, it, it's going to be a ten-year project, it's going to be less money in our coffers, more hassle, and, and we have somebody right now ready to move in and do, do it and make it how, how it should be. And so, I'm asking you folks tonight, think about efficiency, think about what's good for the citizenry, and, and, and move this forward. It, it, it has momentum, it has dollars, it makes sense, and so please, help this project out.
Thank you, Terry.
Good evening, council. Ethan Standard, 1307 48th Street. And since I donated most of my time to Terry, I'll keep my remarks brief. I'm just here on behalf of the Waveland Park Neighborhood Association again tonight to reiterate our continued support for the project, including all the conditions that have been met. And I know I talked with some neighbors after the last meeting that were disappointed to hear the patio might be going away, so I am excited to see that still included as part of the plans tonight. I hope to live to see the final project, Jeff, and don't mess with the pigeons. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan.
Marcus Kane in 2108 38th Street. I'm, I'm here today to speak to you because I love this project, but unfortunately, I was out of town for the planning and zoning at the last city council meeting, but I watched it on YouTube early in the morning. I had the opportunity, when I was on the Beavertale Board, to introduce Jeff and this project at the first community meeting at, at the school. You know, that was over a year and a half ago. It was a wonderful meeting, the support behind it has just grown since then. I think that this, this project will be an amazing asset to the region, and I know, I know, Bill, that we've talked before about how this corridor between Waveland Cemetery and Tower Park and the library and the community center are amazing assets for that, for that three neighborhood area. I think that adding this project to that group of already existing amenities will just make this neighborhood and our community so much better. So I hope that you vote tonight to approve it, and we can get the ball rolling.
Thanks, Marcus. Thoughts? Ideas?
I'm by... I don't know, I came in late. Are we doing everybody? Is it just proponents, or is it just people who are guests, or do I need to sign up?
Well, no, it's...
Is that okay?
Three minutes?
Yeah.
Only if you say Baratas again.
I promise. I promise, well. I'm Terry Pond, 1921 48th Street. I come on behalf of myself and of the Reinbalds, who live down the street, and also the Freesys, who live behind me. They couldn't be here, unfortunately, for a funeral, but they had to go to a good family member tonight. So they're, I'm speaking on behalf of all of us this evening. But I, we are neighbors across the street, and, and I want to be very clear, we, we do not oppose the idea of a new plan across the street. We just ask, and I sent a letter to you over the weekend, I, I sir, hopefully, you've got to read my email, we just ask that we really, really respect the neighborhood. And, and I think, I looked up the new plans for the patio, I talked to Tiva over the weekend, there, there's been some, some major changes that are coming that look like they're trying to make some concessions to the neighbors, and I think everybody on my street is grateful for that. But at the same time, we are, you know, over the weekend, there was a craft fair in the front yard, and there was a speaker blaring, and I had to listen to the radio all day long for seven hours. And I can't do my biology studying that during that day, I can't do things I need to be doing for my job that day, because I have to listen to the music. So as we, as we think about, going with the project, I just think, and I would ask even of the company and people who are part of that, that you just really think about, if you lived, lived across the street from that, what is it that you need to have in order for it to be accommodating to you to live in your home as your home, and be able to do the things you want to do with your family and your, your friends, and respectful in a way that you can, we can coexist? I don't think anybody on my street thinks we want that building to be empty. I don't think anybody on my street even wants it to not go. I just think they want it to be as respectful as possible, with less noise and less traffic if all possible, and all the things that I, that I wrote to you in the letter. So I would ask that, you know, if nothing else, I don't know if that requires the city council to put in requirements of these things, or maybe just, that might be just my request to Jeff, if he's here, and the team, at least people who are building. But if you can sit there and think to yourself, if I lived across the street, would this bother me? And if you can say, yeah, it would, then we probably shouldn't do it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Terry.
Sorry for being late.
She, she brings up a, a good point, and just by way of educating and understanding, I'll underscore what Larry mentioned in his comments. Whenever we do a project, it does allow us to kind of fix some of the stuff that's there already, and, and I'm, I'm not aware that Jeff or the development team has done anything that's contrary to what they're allowed to do already, you know, over the last several months. And, and so like on the issue of blaring music and people talking, the, the kind of permit that tonight's action would allow, would not allow them to do that. And it also wouldn't allow a city staff person to approve a different permit, it would have to come back to the council here. And so, I, I think as people dig into the, to the details of it, you'll see that there are a number of things like that that have been suggested by the development team and their attorney and the council that, that fix a lot of those little things that maybe just weren't really thought through. And, and, and I think I said this last time, you know, in no way am I trying to insinuate that I think Jeff, the team, are doing some kind of bait and switch, or they're going to do something they haven't said. But I also know that their, their intentions aren't really good enough for the council because he, you know, it's in his right to sell it tomorrow. And so we have to zone it and plan all the rules, as if the worst possible operator is going to own it tomorrow morning. And, and so regardless of who's a part of it, we need to make sure that we protected the residents, because whoever buys it inherits all the rights that, that we grant him. And we're, we're, you know, energized and excited that the building has new life, but we need to make sure that there's common sense restrictions to make sure that, that it stays a, a neighborhood benefit. If, if you don't mind, Bill, Frank is not on the phone tonight, so I, without, without a lot of fanfare, I will tell you that I'm really appreciative. Larry mentioned that we'd been talking. I think many of you that have written me before the first meeting got a three-page little letter that I wrote about the kinds of improvements that I'd like to see in it. And I, I would, I would say we've, we've really done probably a work since then, and I appreciate it. I know that Bill has raised a couple of issues with me today. What's the ultimate signage? You know, how is it lit up? What kind of impact might that have on the neighbors? You know, is probably an issue that, that I see is kind of still hanging out there to make sure that we do that right. Larry might have some comments, because we, Bill, Larry and I had a conversation for just a second before this, this meeting. But, you know, I, I think we're to the point where the, that, that I can look at the neighbors that are worried about it and say, we've built in a lot of restrictions. And Larry, while you're getting ready, I'll, I'll just mention a couple others. I think the hours across the street are really important. I think closing down the garden, the Franklin Garden, by ten o'clock is, is really important. I think ensuring that the idea of a hostel as opposed to a hotel, which under state law means two different things and comes with different restrictions, that that's, that's an important benefit to the neighborhood, you know, over the long term. I think, I think striking the outdoor movie theater that would have kind of been in the parking lot is, is wise for the neighbors. I think that could be a slippery slope of, of problems. I think the landscaping and the wall that they've put in the garden, and even the pergola that would drive down noise to the neighborhood, is a really, really good thing. I think restricting the hours of the restaurant as, as it spills out into the garden is important. We talked about the outdoor music, that, that any change other than background music at, at tables would, would have to come back to the council. And, you know, we occasionally pass special events things, and around, around the other side of the parking lot, the Bluegrass Festival happens in July. You know, there, there could be occasional opportunities, but at least your city council would have to have a public meeting about it, and the neighbors would have a chance to weigh in. So we, we, I, I feel like we've made a lot of progress, and I, I appreciate people giving me the chance to provide some input, so... We, I, I mentioned you in part because I, I wanted to clarify the intention about the hostel and the hotel.
Sure.
Because that gets blurry in the written document.
Right. Right, and again, the, the intention and, and what the PUD would allow is a hotel only, and to further clarify, it's, you know, with, with, whatever that definition means, it's a, it's the hotel with, just like you'd have anywhere else, in-room bath, front desk, staff, a 24-hour, you know, and you'd have the, the cleaning every day, and the room service and all that stuff. So it's, Jeff is working with, with the operator of the Hotel Grinnell, one of the owners over there, Angela Harrington. If you've ever been there, it's, it's a wonderful facility. So she's really the one that's kind of helping bring that aspect of it together. But it's going to, I think you'll, once it's, it's open, you'll be real proud of it. It's going to be a great facility. So I think that was one of our attempts to address any concerns that the, the council and some neighbors had. But it's going to take you, once it's open, you'll be real proud of it. It's going to be a great facility. So I think that was one of our attempts to address any concerns that the council and some neighbors had.
The very last thing, and I think you can underscore this too, Larry, is that the staff in their written document referred, and then it's gotten picked up by a number of neighbors and some of the media, about five taverns. That scared me because there's kind of like a blame game of, you know, what operator did what. But in this case, there'd be one license holder and one license that would be accountable for the whole place.
Correct. And I think, and I don't know, I wasn't involved in that stage of the approval process. I'm not sure how that got in the actual application summary when it goes to P&amp;Z, whether that was just a shorthand way for staff to get across to the P&amp;Z or not. But nonetheless, the license would allow for a restaurant that served alcohol. It would serve one bar in the traditional sense, tavern upstairs, approximately 1,300 square feet. And then the other three locations are those locations where they would be open only during events. So like concession stand you'd see at the Civic Center, for example. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about open all the time. So one other question you had, and I think the reason I came back up here was just real briefly to talk about the signage. I don't, because it just came up today, I don't have a good answer for you specifically. Councilman, you also brought this up. And I think we have so far just some conceptual renderings of what we're talking about, monument signage, potentially signage on the smokestack that would just, let's say, for example, Franklin F.J.H.S. or something like that. But that aspect of it, we'll come back to you on the development plan. So before anything occurs, the site plan, we'll come back to you guys in, like according to our schedule, by August. And that's something that you still have to approve. So we're committing to you and we have to by ordinance come back to you with those details on the plan and you'll have the opportunity to say yea or nay to those details at that point. I don't have specifics for you tonight other than our concepts, which, you know, we will probably come back in some fashion there, but we can have that discussion before that next meeting about specifics and get that. So you have that before anything occurs.
Excellent.
I'll go ahead and move unless anybody else. Move A, B, C, and E for item 65. And I do appreciate the changes that have been made. And I think now for me, Mr. Young has the biggest hurdle because he's got to come forward with everything that has been done. I mean, it's an exciting project and there's going to be a lot of people counting on him to come forward and complete this project and make it a centerpiece for this neighborhood. So with that, I'll move.
Comments?
And we can't probably waive the extra hearings until after because Frank's not...
Well, so you would skip C?
D.
Oh, I had A, B, C, and E.
Skipping D.
Well, D is for...
To waiving them and we don't have to make...
To waive it because we can't.
Correct. I was just, that's all I was confused about that.
Sorry if I wasn't.
Okay. I think I'm comfortable with that. I guess Mayor Protem, I'd like to make sure that we have the city manager's office just thinking through the process and how we deal at what stage with the signage. That's, you know, a top concern of Bill and the neighbors close by. And I don't really know what's allowed by right, but, you know, at some point we're kind of want to, it's a big building and there could be a lot of signage around it, I would guess by right. And I think that's one of the things the neighbors just want some continued input into. Okay.
Motion is for A, B, C, and E.
Perfect. Okay. Then moved. Is there any other comment? Please vote. Josh?
Mambalbon votes yes. Thanks, everyone, for the work to get to this point. I think this is going to be a great project and look forward to seeing further progress.
Six, yes.
Got it.
Do we?
I'll be out of town on the 15th.
Honestly, I'm a former Beaverdaleite. And I think that's going to be just a huge project.
I live a half mile from it.
Oh, gosh.
I'm excited about it.
See, I was the only one, and you may try this sometime, I was the only one that ever had, that my address was on 38th Street. I'm the only one that had a Beaverdale address.
Oh, nice. Where was your address on 38th?
Well, yeah, I was in 2014.
2014?
Yeah.
I grew up at 3402, right across from Ash. Down the hill there. But thank you. I live right on 48 Place. Looking straight at the water.
Well, signage-wise, they can do a lot, but not big right side.
I thought they was... Wait a minute.
That was not in, that was not part of the motion.
Right.
So you wanted to go back to the second.
Yeah.
So it comes back.
Couple neighbors want to... We can waive the third. We can waive the third.
When does it come back?
15.
July 15.
15, then you can waive the third.
Yeah. And that was mine.
I'm just asking you. I know you told us that, so if you wanted to change your mind, you can do it now.
Why would I want to do it now? Yeah, no.
Let's get the signs.
I want to, I want Terry Pond to, just want to set that letter. All right. Okay. Sorry, now that everything settles. Item 66, on the 9th and, on 9th and Locust Parking Garage, Electrical Improvements. Resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Price Industrial Electric, Inc., Jeremy Price, President and CFO, for total $546,560. A is approving contract and bond. Is there anybody here to speak on this? Hearing none?
If there's no one here to speak, I'm happy to move items 66 and 66A.
Thank you, Josh.
And I vote yes.
Ms. Gatto? I love saying that.
Yeah, thanks.
Six, yes.
Coming up on one of my favorites, item 67, on 47th and Holcombe, Storm Sewer Improvements. Resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract documents, and engineer's estimate, and designating SM, lowest responsible bidder is SM Hentges and Sons, Stephen F. Hentges, President, $5,948,907.50. A is approving contract, bond, and permission to sublet. Council Communication Number 19-289. Bill, I think it's in your authority to move it, but before you might choose to do that, can he?
He actually can.
Yeah. This can't happen soon enough. Saturday night, 51 weeks after, we had a downpour, we had problems at the intersection again. Scott, Bill and I were trading texts until the wee hours of the morning and they kind of survived. Jenny, who's been here at most of our meetings, is home working on her basement right now because they took on some water but didn't get totally destroyed as last time. So I feel really good about the creative and innovative things that our Public Works and Engineering Team have suggested. And Bill, if you're going to make the motion, I would only suggest that for this interim during construction and as we prepare, we revisit the kind of protocols for that pump. Scott, I know that Jonathan is out of town this week, but that pump was both a real benefit to the water levels and it was just a real source of comfort for the residents. So if we could figure out and communicate with the residents how we're going to deal with this, especially as big equipment gets moved in, that would be great. Well, and one thing, I hope we can get on this thing next month, start this. Hopefully it'll be done by November. God forbid we have any more storms like that. It just seems like there's a funnel right over Beaverdale and it just dumps all the time.
We have five and a half inches on the south side.
Yeah. We can share the wealth then.
East side got it too.
Well, it's just Beaverdale.
It was... The world is changing. Again, well, we've kind of got sidetracked here, but is there anybody here to speak on this item? Then I will make the motion to move 67 and 67A. And I'll tell you, I had an interesting chat. I was doing my morning walk and ran into Jenny. She was doing the morning walk. We kind of crisscrossed each other. And it's an interesting turnaround to have her being so supportive of the actions that we're taking right here, right now. That's a lot of money that we're approving right this very instant, almost $6 million. And it takes a person with the drive that Jenny has to get to the point, and then she's become an asset to the community. So I'm extremely excited and I know she, I just got my sump pump upgraded. I got my son's sump pump upgraded and Jenny's waiting for her, so this couldn't have come at a worse time for her, but we're all getting there. So appreciate everybody's support. This is going to be great for Beaverdale. Josh?
I vote yes.
Six, yes.
All right. Item 68 is on 2019, PCC Pavement Patching Program. Resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating lowest responsible bidder as Iowa Civil Contracting, Inc., Randy D. Miller, President, $1,626,280. Council Communication Number 19-287. A is approving contract and bond. Is there anybody here to speak on that? I'll move it. Move. With the regret that Mr. Grandinette left before he saw that we were spending $8 million to fix roads and stores.
And $6 million on the sewers.
Yeah. Josh?
I vote yes.
Six, yes.
Item 69, on Market District Sanitary Pump Station. Resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating lowest responsible bidder as Minter, Inc., Clint M. Rhodes, President, Council Communication Number 19-293. A is approving contract and bond and permission to sublet. Is there anybody here to speak on that?
I see none. I will move 69 and 69A.
Josh?
I vote yes.
Six, yes.
Item 70. Items Regarding Sidewalks. A, on 2019 Neighborhood Sidewalk Program. Resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating lowest responsible bidder as Tyzac Concrete, Inc., Stephen J. Rett, President, $594,965. Council Communication Number 19-288. One, Communications Regarding Proposed Sidewalks. B, Approving Contract and Bond. C, Communication From Council Member Coleman Regarding Sidewalks. And D, Resolution Directing the City Manager To Work Expediently On Three City Sidewalk Segments. And E, Items Regarding The Floor Drive Reconstruction From George Flag Parkway To Watrous Avenue. One, Accepting Of Real Estate Documents From Wakanda Club For Acquisition Of Property At 3915 Floor. Council Communication Number 19-294. And Two, Approving Change Order Number Three With Synergy Contracting, LLC, For Additional Work On Phase One Northbound Lanes, $260,860,815.95. Council Communication Number 19-285. Is there anybody here to speak on that? No, it's not a mouthful, all right? Show of hands, who wants to speak? Okay. Just line up over there so we can see who it is and we can give your name and address.
My name is Ruth Thompson, 4400 Park, and I'm speaking specifically to the floor drive reconstruction. I just want to thank the council for reconsidering this after having voted against it a month or so ago. This is hugely important to, as a way of linking two communities and making sure that folks have access to the resources that are on either side of Wakanda. So again, thank you so much for continuing to consider this.
Thank you.
Good evening and thanks for listening to my comments. My name's Barb Klubel and I live at 4003 Lincoln Place Drive. And I'm here to advocate for the residents of the neighborhood where my church, First Unitarian Church, is located. It's one block east of Flor, at the corner of Bell Avenue and Cassidy Drive. My husband and I have done door-to-door get-out-the-boat canvassing a long floor drive between Park Avenue to the north and Thornton to the south. And it's right across the street from the Wakanda Country Club. We are two active, healthy adults and we were not comfortable walking there. One has no choice but to walk on people's lawns where the terrain is grassy and slanted and very uneven. It would not be safe or even possible to walk there in the winter. And I can't imagine trying to navigate that route with small children in tow and with a stroller. I think it would just be virtually impossible. In a May 27 article in the Des Moines Register regarding zoning, Phil Delafield, Assistant City Manager, was quoted as saying, "The proposed code puts an emphasis on creating neighborhoods with a variety of uses and green spaces that are accessible by pedestrians and cyclists." Grays Lake and Waterworks Park are two of the most desirable areas for outdoor recreation in Des Moines, and they're only getting better. I know that there are plans for even more improvements at Waterworks Park. For residents of this neighborhood who don't have cars or who simply want to drive less and walk more, there is currently no safe access to these amenities via floor drive. So I urge the council to vote yes to installing sidewalks along floor drive in order to provide safety for pedestrians along that route. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris? Just to make sure that you know, on the west side of Flor, where all the houses are, where you probably...
Yes.
We've already approved sidewalks there.
Oh.
So that's already been done. We're talking about the opposite side of the street.
Right.
Where the golf course is.
Okay.
So on the west side, we've already done it. And I think at the end, Mr. Gatto and others, myself, will probably talk about the connection to Grays Lake too, to continue the sidewalk.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Council. My name is Linda Kreipel and my address is 3716 River Oaks Drive in Des Moines. I am also here to advocate for the neighborhood where my church is located, First Unitarian Church, in Des Moines. Several other members of my church could not be here this evening, so they asked if I also speak on their behalf. They asked that I represent them. First Unitarian members, we generally try to be environmentally friendly and thus many of our members like to walk or bike to our church. Safe access to our church, the amenities on Flor, or to the recreational areas south of our church, and the north-south bus stops are, safety, safe access to those, excuse me, is sorely needed. The sidewalks on both sides of Flor would help improve safety for residents in this neighborhood and the neighborhoods surrounding Flor. It would also potentially cut down on carbon emissions by encouraging people to walk more instead of driving their car short distances. On a related note, one of our members walks to our church and the stores along Flor and said how dangerous it is. She's almost been hit by cars several times trying to cross Flor. And I ask that, she asked that I mention potentially a speed reduction, which many drivers would not appreciate. But once Flor gets fixed and there's no more potholes to jog around or construction to jog around, speed limits are going to go back up. And I for one know that I haven't always... And I for one know that I haven't always kept to the exact speed limit when I'm late for church. Anyway, she was suggesting 35 miles per hour. I say that with police president. I know. I know. What, you know, not, I'm paying attention now. First of all, I would like to thank the council for all of the street and sidewalk repairs that are currently, and sewer repairs that are currently taking place throughout Des Moines, and for working to improve our neighborhoods. I urge the council to vote yes on installing sidewalks on the east side of FLUR in order to provide safety for all pedestrians there. And I really commend Councilman Coleman for putting together his communication and working, the whole council, on working to come to some resolution on this since it was voted down the last time. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Gary Nutt. At 2802 East Euclid, I have had a business there for 31 years. And it came to my attention through a letter that was sent out that we're going to install sidewalks. Now, that's a very notable plan to do. And I'm all about walking. But as far as I see, on the north side, which I am on Euclid, I have several visuals here, most of the traffic occurs to the south side of Euclid on that. It's almost a well-worn pathway. And there's quite a bit of retail space over there. Dollar Tree, Casey's, and a few other stores. The more well-trafficked pattern area is on the south side of Euclid. From the letter, it stated that East Euclid would be paved for sidewalks on both sides of the street. And I'm just not seeing, I'm not seeing the traffic patterns by being there, of pedestrian traffic patterns. I see it more on the south side of Euclid than I do on the north side of Euclid where my office is and property. But I do have some visuals here. If you could pass those out and look at them.
And receive and file.
Chris, can you help?
I'm receiving files.
They're labeled with...
Move, receive and file. All in favor, say yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Say aye. Take one and pass along. Most of the houses on the north side of Euclid are really backdoors. And they're double-wide, the lots are. Most of the frontage is on Clinton Avenue, which is to the north of there. And I keep the properties up, both 2815 Clinton and my office residence there. But I'm just not seeing anywhere on the, on the grass up there. I went across the street to take pictures on the south side of Euclid. However, I do see quite a bit of traffic pattern over there due to the retail space and also people's houses front to Euclid on that side. And so I, I just basically, I see, I think it'd be a waste of time for sidewalk on that side of the street since nobody would, I don't see the patterns there. Maybe that could change. Hey, it could change. But for right now, I don't see the patterns or justification for it on the north side of Euclid on that side of the street. But then again, like I said, that could change. But it's just a fact. Then I talked to one of the engineers out there. There is a county owns to the east of that. It's an outflow for a creek feeding into Four Mile. And there's a ravine and drop-off there. So it could represent a little more cost to build a railing up there. And that's the property just immediately east of mine on 2815 Clinton. That's the backyard, of course, but there's a ravine down there that could require a railing system to prevent people from wandering off the path and falling down in there. Of course, there's also maintenance issues in the, I don't know what county's property is. I'm just concerned with my property. But as you can see there, I just wanted to bring that up to you. And it's admirable. You know, I'm excited about the changes that have happened in our community and our city here. And I commend you for that, so. I just like to take this time.
Thanks, Gary. I wanted to let you know the property that you're talking about with the ravine.
Yes.
I drove by there today, and the grass is very long, and I have already sent the city an email because last year we had to get the city out there to mow it, and I don't think anybody's been out there. So we should see that taken care of. It's DOT, but the city maintains it, is what I was told. So that should, that should look better in the next few days. So I just wanted you to know that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. My name's Rick Trower. I'm the president of the Grays Lake Neighborhood Association, which encompasses the east side of FLUR Drive where the sidewalk is in question. And we have unanimous support from our membership of our neighborhood association for supporting and approving the sidewalk. We really think this is going to help connect the south side, connect the neighborhoods that are on the east side of FLUR Drive to shopping up at the Wakanda Center, Hy-Vee, and then also be able to get people from that side of the neighborhood down to Grays Lake. I think this is going to be great for our neighborhood and for the south side and city of Des Moines in general. So we would appreciate your support. If any questions, please let me know if I can help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Armstrong, 140946 Street. I'm on behalf of the street collective today. I just wanted to say thank you all for putting these items back on the agenda, especially FLUR Drive, as well as the communications from Councilman Coleman. We have been really pleased this year to see that council has made sidewalk gaps a major priority and that we are taking a look at putting these on both sides of very major roadways. We know that 2018 was the highest it's been in a long time for pedestrian fatalities. So when we have these major roads like FLUR, it's really important to us that we're not having our citizens crossing back and forth down the block. And since FLUR has often been called sort of a gateway into our community, we think it's really important to have that option there. So again, we're just very thankful that we're taking another look at this, that there has been consistent, continuous support from council and staff to fill in very needed sidewalk gaps. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's sneaking up here now?
It's me. And then I'm introducing Maddie. Stacy Freeland, I represent the American Heart Association. We've been working with the council for some time now on complete streets projects and trying to move that through the process. We really feel like, in particular, we're really appreciative that you brought these back up again, these items. Councilmember Coleman in particular, I know we've met with you quite a few times on this, and we really, really appreciate your support and help with this process. And I think, who can speak to this better than Maddie, really, about the importance of having sidewalks on both sides of the road? She really wants to communicate why that's important, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Maddie.
Got a microphone?
Yep, yep.
Good, all right.
Maddie Miller, 6220 Southeast Second. I am a big supporter of sidewalks, not just on one side, on both. I really want a sidewalk to go to Grays Lake, just because it's getting nicer out and I like to go to Grays Lake. But also for people with disabilities or walkers or whatever, just to have access to the community, because I love being out in the community. And now that I have, well, some sidewalk, I can get to the bus stop. So I really, really hope that you guys approve this. Thank you.
Just a real quick comment, Bill, for Maddie. Must be a small world, because I just talked about you two hours before this meeting with our city engineer. And so we're going to work on putting sidewalks on Southeast Second for you this fiscal year so you can get to the Y and get to the bus stop and do what you need to do. We haven't forgot about you.
Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Councilman Coleman, you had item C here.
Well, you know, not to rehash a lot of history, but we, I think, all felt like the way the meeting unfolded when FLUR was in front of us was not good. We didn't have all the details that we wanted. The manager recommended we take it off the agenda. We voted on it anyway. And then a lot of the people that were here spoke to many of us in the weeks after that. I reached out to the manager. People have mentioned me by name, which is not necessary. But, you know, Scott helped me kind of find a way forward. Josh is on the phone. Josh and I met a couple of times about FLUR in particular and how we could treat this as kind of a high priority in Ward Three. But there's other ones. And so engineering and Scott bubbled up a list of things that neighborhood groups have asked about around the city. And I thought a good way to go about trying to do this is make sure that especially the three Ward council people from other areas weren't being asked to fund what turns out to be a pretty expensive but needed sidewalk, you know, without fixing a couple of their high priority ones. And so Linda, I'm sure, and Joe and Bill want to just mention what we're also doing in that area because they're just as critical as the FLUR Drive segment. So I don't know if one of you want to go first.
I would love to.
Go ahead, Linda.
And I know that a lot of us got a lot of feedback from people after our last vote where we turned it down. And I just want to thank Mr. Coleman and the other council members that worked with this. When I voted no, it was simply because, and I think Dr. Nutt did a really good job. People who live in apartments, the only way they can get to Hy-Vee or to Walgreens to get their medicine is on this street, on Euclid, where there are no sidewalks. People are walking in the, in the tall, in some cases, very tall grass or the street, and that's a state highway. And I could not in good conscience vote to spend $500,000 in front of the golf course. And I always refer back to the neighborhood plans. And if you look at that neighborhood plan, it very clearly says the neighborhood, when the neighborhood plan was written, they were well aware that there were not sidewalks, but they were not going to make it a priority because they felt that homeowners that lived along there could pay and put sidewalks in. And I've looked back at that, and that is exactly what it says. So, you know, when I made that decision, it was because of that. I'm thinking, how can I possibly vote to spend $500,000 to put sidewalks on both sides of FLUR Drive when I've got people in my ward that have no sidewalks on either side of the street? And, you know, we have a lot of apartments and Walgreens, and Hy-Vee is the only place where they can go to get medicines. And I see people all the time. I know at Hy-Vee, in the wintertime, I've taken people, I've seen them walking, and I've stopped to pick them up, to offer to take them home because they're struggling through, through, through snow and ice and other things. So I'm very happy that we've been able to work out a solution. We're going to add some sidewalk there from the Four Mile Creek Bridge over to about East 33rd. That's not been there before. So I appreciate that. I think that's a good plan. And with that, knowing that we, that sidewalks in Ward Two don't have to wait three years because that's where, that's where we were with the priority with that sidewalk, because we were like three years out. So because we can bump it up, I certainly will support the sidewalks on FLUR in front of the, in front of the golf course. So thank you for making that possible, and thanks to everyone on the council.
Sure. Thanks, Linda. I'll echo the same comments. It's great to hear folks talk about sidewalks because about three years ago, nobody wanted to talk about sidewalks in the neighborhoods. We wanted to talk about bike lanes on the streets, but nobody wanted it downtown. Nobody wanted to say anything about sidewalks in our neighborhood. And so when we sat down to do Move DSM, I had a long talk with Mr. Voss over there about, hey, maybe we should get some of these sidewalks. And Mr. Bill Good, that represents some of the schools. And, you know, we need to stop worrying about so many bike lanes on the road, and let's make sure that our kids can get to school safely. And I'm happy to say it's not going to be three years before we get sidewalks around House School now. It's going to be this year. And that's what it needs to happen with the construction that we're going to have on Southeast Fifth and being able to connect to an elementary school that I went to, that there was never any sidewalks around. Those are the type of things that needed to be worked out before we voted on that. And sometimes that's when the city manager steps in and pulls an agenda item off there, and it's not voted on that night. So some of these details can be worked out before we have such a mess that we had that night. So sometimes that's how city government works. It just takes a little bit of time and compromise. And I'm happy to say that I will be supportive of this. We've got, we've got it at a less price for Wakanda. We've got a little bit more room, so it's a little safer. And we've got a guarantee of what type of fence is going to be built there. So I think that's a win-win for all of us to make sure what's going to happen. And if I was everyone else, I would advocate, I would be an advocate of getting it all the way down to Waterworks Park on the west side because the bridge would be able to handle a sidewalk on there. I don't know why we're stopping, I don't know why it was, you know, we're going to stop just right here because on the other side of the street, there's going to be no sidewalk either. So maybe when we reconstruct that portion of it, we'll take a look at it. But good work, Mr. Coleman. I appreciate you putting this together, and I'm happy to be supportive of it. And I'm sure the folks on the south side will understand, they get it on FLUR Drive, but they also get it around an elementary school that really needs it.
I too am going to support it. Great job on Councilman Coleman's part. That was, that took a lot of work. I am glad to see that happen. And the area that we're hitting is over there on Merle Hay and Hickman. And that has needed, that whole intersection needs a lot of work. And we've got kids that go to Hillis School there that need to have some sort of transportation on a sidewalk, and having them walk next to the street is not a solution. So I appreciate that. And I do appreciate getting sidewalks in where one has never been before. I do want to thank Scott for, on 30th Street, we had a stretch there from Urbendale Avenue to Boston, and it was sandwiched between the Easter Seal Center and the VA Hospital. So if you think there's enough wheelchair traffic and scooter traffic there, that's one thing. The only route they had was to go down the street because there was nothing on either side. So I commend Scott for taking the bull by the horns on that one and providing safety not only for veterans or anybody that's handicapped, needs handicap accessibilities, but also for the children that need to go to Monroe School there too. So I too am going to support this. I think it's a great plan. Again, Councilman Coleman, thank you for taking this one under your wing and giving us an opportunity to improve all the neighborhoods right here in our city, a piece at a time. Josh?
Yeah, well, I want to echo what's been said. You know, folks have heard me talk about particularly the FLUR sidewalk piece and how important that is from a complete streets perspective and how it connects neighborhoods to great amenities in our city. And so I'm appreciative of everyone on the council and Councilmember Coleman working with me to figure out a way to make this happen. And I think our citizens will benefit from this, and I'm glad that we were able to get it done. I could go on and on, but it's late where I am, so I will, I will, I will stop with that. Appreciative of everyone's work on this and the fact that we've been able to get it done.
All right. Connie, yes. Go ahead, Connie, yes, please.
Just keep Josh up a little later. I've been supportive of it. I believe that, you know, when we say that we already have the plan that on major arterial roads, we'll try to get it on both sides. So I think this is an absolute important section that we complete, and I'm glad it got brought back so that we can now add other ones. As we all know, there's no shortage of need for sidewalks. So again, we want to thank the community for passing the sales tax because hopefully we can move more items up. So it's not one or the other. We just make a complete, hit our plan out there and do the school routes first and then build where we can. So I'm very supportive. I'm glad it's been brought back. And I do think, to your point, Mr. Gatto, that we need to go all the way down to Grays Lake. It's too important of a connection. It's too important of a connection on both sides, too. So whatever we can do to make that asset even stronger.
Yeah, I think we should go, Waterworks should be putting it in front of theirs also.
Right.
Des Moines Water Works should be paying, not the City of Des Moines, but the Des Moines Water Works should be paying for a sidewalk on their park and getting it completed.
They probably have the funds, they could do that.
I bet they do.
Chris, before we go, is there anybody, we're going to close the hearing before we vote here. Does anybody else want to say anything more?
Chris has an interesting picture up.
The hearing's closed. Chris, go ahead.
I'm going to move this, and it's not on our agenda, and I don't expect action, but I would like to refer these three pictures to the manager's office. Bill mentioned this little stretch to me, and I said, Bill, you won't believe it, I've been taking pictures of the people that are waiting there. This is a driveway into the little shopping center where my office is. This happens to be today, you're sitting there. That is winter. It would be, you probably can't see in there, but there's the bus stop.
Oh, yeah.
Right where you're supposed to stand, about eight feet into that pile. And this is probably the saddest picture, and I apologize to the people, but if you're a person that has any kind of accessibility issues or use wheels or any assistance, it's impossible to be there without being in the street as the cars drive by. And I don't know if you can see, but the street pinches there because there's a post office box in the middle of the street. And so people have to kind of swerve around, cars park there as well. And that is, well, you guys know where it works, but the community might not, that would be less than a half a block east of Beaver on Urbendale Avenue, right across from the post office. And it's, there's no sidewalk and no rest stop or anything there. And just as we're talking about sidewalks, I know it's not in our plan, but Bill, this came up between Bill and I last week, and we just wanted to refer that on.
Right. And we did a year ago, but it wasn't even curbs there before. It just sloped right into the street. So like you see that person in the wheelchair, once they got there, they'd just be sliding right out of there. There was no protection at all. So we've done a little bit of work there, but we need to finish the project. So I've thought exactly what Councilman Coleman said, refer that back to you for some assistance there. Any other comments? Motion's been made? All those vote?
Have we moved it?
I'll move seventy.
I don't think anybody's moved it yet.
I'll move.
Oh, she'll move it.
I'll move seventy, A, B, C, D, E. Does that cover all of it?
One and two.
And one and two.
Thank you, Connie. And Josh?
I vote yes.
And we're good.
And without dragging this out, Josh, thank you. And thanks especially to American Heart, Amos, AARP, who've been kind of instrumental in continuing these conversations.
Okay, that's the last of the hearings. I noted six twenty-four.
We go back to fifty-four.
How much?
Mr. Stafford's here.
I know, that's the next one I'm going to hit. Now, before we move on, Mr. Sackler, can you hold one second?
Okay.
Yeah. We had item fifty-four. We had to move on. Can we reconsider?
I'll move to reconsider item fifty-four.
Do we want to do it now or at the end of the meeting?
Yes, I think we do it now.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Need a roll call.
Okay. We have to vote.
My name is Henry Schnackel. I live at thirty-eight.
Hold on a second, sir. Sir, hold on a second.
We've got to put a vote in to let you speak, so if you just got a second. Josh?
Yep.
Linda?
Oh.
Chris?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes.
Six yes.
Okay. Now, we'll put you up. Item fifty-four, let me, request from Henry Schnackel?
Schnackel.
Schnackel, I did pretty good. Thirty-eight fifty-one Sage Street to speak regarding change to type of trailer allowed for dumping yard waste at the Harriet Street facility. You're on stage.
Okay, anyway, my name is Henry Schnackel. I live at thirty-eight fifty-one Sage Street, Des Moines, Iowa, five oh three one seven. And you said what it was about. I was blindsided at the Harriet Street compost site informed that a trailer with tandem axle and dump box are prohibited as of that day, June fifteenth. I guess at this point, I don't know whether it includes all scrub sites or not, like Delaware, that's not compost, but it includes all, I assume. There was one person there moving his load from a trailer to a pickup so he could dump. My opinion is that the proper way to handle this change was to take ID, say you can dump this time, but no, this time only. No mailing was sent out on this change. The change is discriminatory. It discriminates against people who need to lighten their workload due to age or handicap and those who are not doing commercial hauling. I have not and will not do any commercial hauling. I purchased this trailer in 2011 for yard waste and scrubs. I'm not sure what the goal is, if it is to cut down on the amount of yard waste. Trailer size allows, allowed is larger than mine. I purchased four cubic yards of compost from this site over the years and provided much wood for compost for them to run their compost. Commercial, commercial means to me that is being paid, someone is being paid to pick up and dump yard waste. Most waste comes from people doing their own or helping a neighbor or a family member. My trailer is ten foot long, five foot wide, and three foot deep, smaller than the Max, which is twelve foot long, six and a half feet, and four feet deep. Scrubs allows limbs twenty-four inches in diameter and ten feet long, and approximately weight is twenty-five hundred pounds. Even cut up, this is a lot of weight. And a dump saves time and work. Rather than penalize honest citizens making their life easier, collect ID from those with that type of trailer and investigate. The city should not, the city should not penalize honest citizens because they look like commercial haulers. I and Des Moines citizens appreciate the scrubs event. I believe this ill-conceived and administered change should be reversed. We who have not allowed dump to dump should be allowed to dump soon or pre-arrange time or at least the next scrubs. I have forty to forty, forty, forty foot trees plus old trees on my lot which shed a lot of limbs and need frequent pruning. The grass, flowers, garden, and yard produce waste compost. I hope the council will agree that the trailer is not the problem, and a citizen has a right to use tandem axles and dump box. I thank the council for listening to my issue.
Thank you. Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Schnackel. I know, I know exactly where you live, and you do have a big, big yard. You know, you were, you were one of those lucky people that got annexed into the city. So your, your yard is a little bit different than what, than what a lot of the residents in Des Moines have. And, you know, I just want to say, I don't think we're done with this discussion. With Jonathan, we're here this evening. I know I've had several conversations with him. My neighbor is very upset because he has a double axle trailer, and, you know, it's his own personal things, and he was turned away. I actually went and worked the mega scrub site a couple of weeks ago at the Capitol Complex. So I was there, and they did turn away some people that had the double axle trailers. And I was also at the Harriet site, I don't know, a month or so before that. And it was at one fifteen, and there were probably thirty double axle trailers still in line to dump. So unfortunately, we had, there has been an issue with commercial haulers. So somehow, we've got to figure out a way to keep the commercial guys out so you and my neighbor can dump your, you know, your limbs and brush. Because I get it, you've, you've got a big yard, and you do have a lot of tree limbs and things. I'm sure that you do. So I don't think that discussion is over. I guess I would ask that the city manager, that we sit down and we talk about this in the future, about how we want to handle it in the future. But we as residents pay for that scrub. So you and I, all of us in this room that live in Des Moines are paying for it. And it's not fair for the commercial guys to go and charge you a hundred dollars to clean out your basement and then bring it over and dump it. And I know that that's what they were doing. I used to work the dump, the scrub sites years and years ago when, when we had them in our neighborhoods. And I can remember how frustrating it was because you'd get people that it was clearly commercial haulers would come in and want to dump things. So that's costing the residents, so I understand that. I also had a conversation with Jonathan. He sent me, I'm sure he sent others, an email. In order for scrub to survive, we have to have volunteers there. And I went and worked the mega scrub site, and there were maybe seven volunteers there. Now, that's too bad. We need to get the neighbors out and our residents out to say, come and help if we want to keep our scrub days. And I do want to keep them. I think it's important that you as a resident can take your, your items, that my neighbor can, you know, fill up his double axle trailer with all of his yard debris because he's got a big yard, too. So I appreciate you being here. I would, I would just ask that the city manager, that we sit down, maybe have, take another look at that, refer it back. We can have another discussion with Jonathan and try to figure out something. But if we don't do something, we're at risk of losing scrubs altogether. And, and, and I don't think that's what any of us want. You know, it's a way to rid the urban blight that's in our neighborhoods. So it's important that we keep them, but we've got to figure out a way to make it work.
Yes, well, thank you for all that. You know, I appreciate the scrubs, and I'm sure most of Des Moines does. And I know you have some commercial people doing dumping there, but there's got to be a way to, I would suggest that you could take, when that kind of trailer comes in, you take, you guys license them, identity, stuff like that, and find out if he's actually doing it for hire. I don't know if that's practical or not, but I guess that's the way I'd try to approach it myself. But I just, I just think it's unfair, of course, that, I've had this since 2011 and been going to that site regularly every, every month it's available and when I had enough to get rid of, so.
I'm, I'm really confident that our Public Works Director will, will work to come up with a solution. He's, he's really, you know, we're very lucky to have the Public Works Director that we have. And I, I would bet that Jonathan will sit down and figure out a way that it will work truly for the residents.
Well, I don't know, maybe if, if they pay the one-year fine, I'm not fine one-year to be able to use the facility that way. That'd be one thing. And I guess the other would be just have a person who swore he doesn't, isn't doing commercial work. And if he gets caught at it, he gets fined, you know, but, but what else, what else is there to do? So, okay, well, I appreciate your time. And hopefully, we can work something out because I got a trailer full of stuff that I haven't got rid of.
Did you drop it out front?
Huh?
Did you drop it out front?
No, yeah, I left it out in the hall.
Thank you, sir. I'll move to receive and file and direct the city manager to have some additional conversations. And we as a council need to talk about it to figure out a way that we can make it work.
Okay, well, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thanks for coming back.
Yeah. Thank you, Joe and ladies.
Thank you.
Josh?
Yes.
Yes.
Not a bad.
Joe?
Yes.
I love saying that.
Yes.
Six yes.
All right. Moving on, we're going to item fifty-nine. Items regarding the Downtown Des Moines Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District, Schmid. A, approving the operating agreement. B, approving parking garage service agreement. C, approving maintenance for Principal Riverwalk, Hanson Triangle, Western Gateway Park, and MLK Junior Parkway, and exemption from the procurement ordinance requirements. Council Communication Number nineteen dash two seventy. Is there anybody here to speak about that?
I just have one question, too.
Commissioner?
Yeah, if I could just start by saying thank you to both the Parks Department and our downtown operation because we, in the past, have had to spend an awful lot of time and effort on this contract to continue it. And with the work that was done in the last cycle, and Ben in particular with his staff, we were able to come up with a very specific assignment to all the duties that are involved and, and agree to that. And really, this time, there was just a couple tweaks, and it was done. So kudos and thank you to the partnership through the OD as well.
Mr. Mayor Pro Temp?
Yes.
I do like saying that, too.
Uh, yes.
I do have a question about this. When there's going to be another large park that's going to get built in the Market District and where Mid-Am is there just south?
Yep, they're, they're building a park the size of the Western Gateway there. Will this include the maintenance for that, or will we have to amend it when that park is built? I would assume we'd have to amend it because we need to understand the parameters. But what we'll do is use the same process that we already have in place and put that in the grid and work through that.
Just want to make everybody, put that on the radar for everybody, and I know Ben will take care of it, so I appreciate that. I can move fifty-nine, A, B, and C.
No, I don't want to move it, but I'm really glad that Ben got a shout-out. I'm, I'm on that Operation Downtown Board, and they love the interaction with our Parks Department and the team he has. Good job, Ben.
Josh?
I vote yes.
Six yes.
Item sixty, draft proposal for Euclid Avenue, U.S. Highway Six, Lane Reduction Pilot Project, Pilot Project, why do we have to say it twice? And direct staff to submit proposal to the Iowa Department of Transportation, IDOT, for review and approval. Council Communication Number nineteen dash two eighty-four. Is there anybody here to speak about that? Wow.
I think he left. Drew was here, but he, he left.
All right. Close the hearing? Anybody?
I would love to talk about this.
Huh?
This has been a long time in the makings, and, and I wish Larry James were still here because Larry James has done a really good job with helping us understanding and working with city staff to, to, to move this along. So this is, you know, what we're voting on is for the draft proposal, and now that will be submitted to DOT for their approval. And hopefully, we will get past that, and then we can have a pilot program to change the lanes there on Euclid Avenue. So I'm very supportive of it, and I would move item sixty.
I just got one question. Scott, what, what kind of timeframes are we looking at here? If this goes through, we get the DOT to be a part of this, when?
If this goes through, we get the DOT to be a part of this, when do you see this first happening? Is it for a year or when do we review?
It's...
I'm going to actually bring Steve up to, I might want him to speak here about workload.
There's Steve, I was looking over it that way, I didn't see you.
All right, Mayor Protem, honoree members of the city council, I'm Steve Neighbors, city engineer. So the question on timeframe, again, we would submit, with council direction, we'd submit to the DOT right away. And we'd be looking at actually a June 2020 installation. A lot of the reasons for that is, one, we obviously wouldn't want to do it this fall, right before, shortly before snowfall, that doesn't tend to bode well before, for pilot projects and paint markings. And so...
Indelineers?
Indelineers, yep.
You don't have to take that. Just saying. I read delineers in this thing, I'm like, okay.
The other reasons are, we also want to make sure we give the pilot a fair shake in the sake of, June is after school is out and there are a couple of schools and so maybe given the chance for traffic patterns, traffic to get used to it a little more before school gets back in session in September. So June of 2020 is the goal for installation, should we get approval from the DOT.
And then June of 2021 is evaluation?
We would want to evaluate it for a minimum of at least one year, yes.
Correct, yeah.
And Steve, you have been great to work with, so thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right. It's been moved. Josh?
I vote yes.
Yes. Six yes.
All right, final item here. 61. Creation of Invest DSM, Inc., Receiving Articles of Incorporation and Bylaws and Appointing Board Members. Council Communication number 19-297. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? Just looking.
I'm moving item 61.
Hang on one second, I just got, I got a few questions, just a couple of questions. Can I go?
Yes, you can. I like saying, Joe, you can go.
So I know that I've had some folks reach out to me and ask me about, we're doing the two and a half million for this this year and I'm fully supportive of that. But I want to, I want to make everyone comfortable if they're not in that targeted area like the rest of the city. What are our minimum standards? What type of funding are we putting towards the rest of the city for neighborhood improvement? Things that we want to do in other parts of the city? And what have we did in the past? Is that changing? Are we taking the money from here? Because I don't think that's the case, but I think that we need to be clear of what exactly we're doing.
Sure.
And I'm going to ask you that.
Yep, that's fair. And so we've talked about this in pieces, so we can sure put out more information that really highlights this. This new program, the Invest DSM, is additive. This is in addition to what we've done in the past. So our relationships with some of the nonprofits that are here remain. And so the funding agreements we have with them also remains. With this new program, there's going to be more work to be done in our neighborhoods. So there's an opportunity for nonprofits and others because it's going to take cooperation with for-profit builders as well to make this successful. So there's going to be an awful lot more work done because this is additive, it is utilizing sales tax funds that our voters did approve, right? That was the full intent. So it's not only additive, but what we'll do is highlight for you, because I've got this on my desk even, all the other services that continue and even increase, starting with the removal of blight. That is a citywide effort and we've always talked that way, it's already occurring, right? So removal of blight. Rental enforcement. And so we have put more effort into that as well. And so I've got a full list that we can go through.
Don't we, we have a fund for property improvement, don't we? Is that part of it?
Private property improvement?
Yeah.
So there is both CDBG funds that can go into private improvements and part of the sales tax is also going to be for grant opportunities for the neighborhoods outside these four areas to also put forth a proposal that says maybe, maybe like a rock the block type of event that they want to do something a little different possibly.
Do we know how much, how much is going to, how much from the sales tax that will be put into that?
Is that $200,000 or $100,000? $100,000 to start with, but...
How much have we did in the past?
Zero, that's not been anything that we've done in the past. So if we find that there is more of a demand than that, we absolutely can readdress for additional grant funds for those neighborhoods that are proposing their own improvements. But the list is even longer than that, so I'll be sure to send that out as well.
I want to build off what Joe's saying and we, I think all of us said this in the workshop that we had.
Recently.
So, you know, I'm probably repeating what other people said first, so, but we need to message this better than we have. And I think there are even some long-term things that sometimes we take for granted that when we're talking to neighborhoods about it, we should, you know, be able to articulate, like NBSD and, you know, the neighborhood resource officers that we have, you know, basically attending every neighborhood association meeting in the city. And I just think there's a, there's probably a graphic there and Al's here today, I think it'd probably be worth, you know, saying, put somebody with fresh eyes around it to say, "How do we on one page build an image or a little narrative that helps?" Everybody here at this table is out talking to neighborhood associations, you know, we'll talk to four that really care about Invest Des Moines and 50 that aren't, you know, that that information isn't applicable. And so we need to be able to talk about how we're still doing what we've done, we're adding to it because of the sales tax, and we're using this as an incubator to learn about how to do good things in other neighborhoods.
And that's all true.
And so the million dollar that we would give to the...
Both the NFC and NBC.
No, not just that, but we had a program in place, and I know that went away this year, that we would...
Million and a quarter, yeah.
To give to neighborhoods that became recognized.
Yes.
That program's gone away.
Yep, they already had.
Yeah, and so that money is in, in where?
And so that's actually going into streets through bonding.
Okay.
And so, and that's another aspect of all the neighborhood...
Sidewalks.
Right, and I'm very supportive, I just think that we need, and I think we need to message it much better than we have to the other four, not the four, I think the four targeted areas get it, but I just want to make sure that everyone gets it in the entire city, what we're doing and how we're doing it and why we're doing it. And hopefully Al can help with some of those things. I know he's very good at what he does, so that could be a positive spin on that.
I have a couple of questions. Has the city ever brought about their own nonprofit?
Yes.
Could you give me an example?
Oh geez. It's the seat, Matt's not here. There was an economic development arm that was created and that was also looked at through this process.
Corporation for Economic Development.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That had been created.
Did that go away?
Yes, yes. And so, yes, we recognize...
Friends, the parks, kind of would be an extension.
Yep. I think the key here is when we have partners. And we talked about this at the last work session, that there was a real opportunity to bring the county in on this effort as well.
I get that.
And so the best way to do that is to create a new entity that both would have representation on. And I want to be clear on this, too. To be successful, we are going to absolutely need a lot of participation in the for-profit realm as well, whether it be the rehabbing side or new construction.
Absolutely.
And so there will be, if this is successful, private participation on this nonprofit as well.
And how much is it costing the taxpayers to form this nonprofit?
Very little. I mean, so what, the key here is that the council has also indicated support, we need to do something more bold with our neighborhoods to, and so the effort is to put more funds, the sales tax, into neighborhoods. So regardless if there's a new board or staff, we're looking at four to five individuals, staff that would need to start this nonprofit. So you're looking at maybe close to $500,000 to get it started.
And is that over a year? Is that...
It would take probably, around less than a year to get it up and started, if that's...
I guess just what, what my concern is, I mean, I'm looking out there and we've got three nonprofit organizations here that have done a really good job in our community.
Absolutely.
They have been our partners, they have worked with us, and I'm disappointed that we're not working with them in this nonprofit.
So we absolutely are working with these entities, they've been involved in the conversation. This has been a two-year process and we've had steering committees, meetings for, again, over two years. So there's going to be an opportunity for more work, clearly. We've got, what the city is talking about, a $5 million investment of our own annually. The county has already committed to the first two and a half million in the first year. So there is going to be an awful lot of extra work in our neighborhoods that's going to get accomplished and there's going to be opportunity for them to do more work as well.
And how is that going to be gauged? How are we going to know what's happening and where that money has spent?
That's exactly the responsibility of the new board.
It comes down to the CZB and there's, there are things in that CZB report that are absolutely not true. When they gave, when they gave figures about neighborhoods and they, I don't know where, you know, they said, "Well, we talked to, talked to this person or that person." But I've questioned it then and I question it now.
Sure. I guess the best point, Councilmember Westergaard, is that what we've done for decades has not worked. And it's time that the city of Des Moines be very bold and put the neighborhood initiatives as the highest priority. There have already been great strides by this council in addressing issues that have persisted over decades. I'm talking about street improvements, the flood improvements that you've made. And I got the feeling that in our conversations over the past two years, that you also wanted to put that bold initiative and investment into neighborhoods. And it's going to take something new to get that done.
And I agree with that, but if we're going to fund this nonprofit...
Sure.
We who are elected need to be able to say to our constituents, "This is how much money has been spent and this is what you've got for your dollar."
Absolutely.
Are we going to get that report a year from now?
Those conversations will start as soon as the board gets constituted with this action. And one of the first assignments of that board is to have the conversation about what the expectations are, knowing what funding is coming in. We're talking about numbers of transactions, number of households that have been impacted, the valuation created. All of that is part of that first conversation that needs occur after these, is constituted, after the board is created.
And I noticed on the agenda, it's receiving articles of incorporation and bylaws. I think I didn't get that sent in with my questions today. Where are those articles of incorporation and bylaws? Because I don't see them in the packet. Where are they?
Yeah. Well, I apologize, I thought you already had those, we'll make sure that you have those.
Were they sent? I don't think I've seen them.
In different drafts, they have been out there, but we'll make sure you have the final draft. They were amended a few days before the county approved the very same documents, so we'll make sure you have the final, final version of those.
Scott, I think you said something really important and one of my first priorities five years ago was, one of the reasons that I ran and sitting here right now was to get the neighborhoods back to what I remember they were. And we haven't, and no fault of any of the nonprofits that we've got, they're limited of what they can and can't do, and they did great strides and no knock on them, but we got to do something different. Because what we're doing is not working to what I'm proud of. And so I applaud you for, and all of us, for working with the county, creating this. And, you know, we will have benchmarks, I believe, whatever board's set up, however it's going to be set up, benchmarks, and hopefully we'll be able to hit those, or else I believe the county won't be in for any money. And I think part of the reason that we're not using some of the nonprofit is they want to be, they want to be a part of this. They want to sit on the board, if they're given two and a half million dollars, they want to, they want to say, "And what's happening?" And not just, because I believe they're funding some of these other nonprofits with over a million dollars themselves. And they have a representative on there, but they're not, they do not have the board. And that's why this board is being created. And I don't know if you stated that, but I'm going to, I'm going to call spade a spade and that's what it is. And I think I've shared that with every, all three of the nonprofits that are sitting there, but it's no knock on them, they're doing a great job. It's just that we got to do something different. And the folks that are putting in half the money want to do something different, I agree that we should be doing something different and we're going to, I think this is a really good thing. So I know when we hired you, that was one of your first priorities. And you were in the paper saying you wanted to improve the neighborhoods. And so I'm glad that we're sitting here, what, four years from almost the date you were hired and...
The sales tax was crucial.
It was crucial. It was very crucial for the funding, but I just, you know, to sit and knock it before we haven't did anything, I just, I think we all, we all know why we're here and what we're doing. So I don't know. I think the CZB report that came out, I mean, it's, it's the real deal. Drive around, because it'll show you. I mean, my, the neighborhoods, if they listed as orange or red or on the bubble, they're right. And I just, you know, I, this is something that I get, I just...
We, I'm with you. The two things, and you already moved in, I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to working with Mrs. Bozen as at-large people because we don't have a specific connection to one of the four neighborhoods. I'll give you one example in terms of how I, how I see the value of the nonprofits. Because we have a nonprofit like NFC that has kind of mastered getting loans and home improvement stuff out there, I don't see why another nonprofit association with the city like this one would ever recreate an underwriting and, you know, their own staffing to produce their own loans. We would use partners that are already skilled in that. But, but, you know, you kind of have, you have kind of the central cog of the system on these four neighborhoods being the one organization. So I say that to give people a little comfort who value those organizations, they bring something to the table, we need to find ways to leverage what they're good at for all the ways that the main fund or the main organization has it. With your motion, Connie, I'd like to suggest two things, just because I don't want to get caught flat-footed. One is just about the leadership of the committee, that maybe we'd include in our motion that there should be a co-chair from both the city and the county so that the three of us can pick the co-chair from the city and the county can pick their co-chair and we can figure things out. The other thing is I do think this is important enough and the next couple of months are really important to getting it started, that we should have a designated alternate or proxy that can step in for the city. And I'd suggest, I was in a conversation earlier about this, Bill already, Mayor Protem, excellent job tonight, by the way.
Thank you.
If we did it in seniority, it would mean that Bill wouldn't go because he's Mayor Protem, you know, Joe, Bill, when he's not Mayor Protem, Linda, and Josh, and work our way through the four, so every year somebody could serve as an alternate if you, I, or the mayor couldn't be there. And I'd like just our action to give them the power of a vote so we're always represented with our three people. And if, I think the manager knows of this suggestion and agrees... And if, I think the manager knows of this suggestion and agrees with it. So...
Yeah, I think, I just wanted to go back. I don't have a problem with those because I think that gives three people at all times and the county can have a third, you know, an alternate too.
Right.
You know, to me, this is, as you said, it's an incubator for these just four neighborhoods. And we're going to be able to do so much more. There's, there is more than enough work in this city to get done. The reason I ran is the reason you ran, Joe, because of what I saw in the neighborhoods going door to door 20 years ago and it hadn't changed. And I think that we've got to do something different. We've done great things in pockets. We just need to ramp it up and get it done. And I think that this is more than, it's just a bigger idea of how we're going to approach and do more really investment door to door in those zones. I've sat in a lot of the meetings and it's kind of interesting because every neighborhood has similar problems. There, it's kind of across the board, but each one has a unique issue. And I think this, we'll be able to identify those issues in a more detailed way and really bring about some change that we can replicate, hopefully. So our partners that we have now are critical to continuing what's going on, not only in these neighborhoods, but also the city, the rest of the city. There's, like I said, there's ample opportunity for anyone to come in and help, whether it be private or public, to help revitalize our neighborhoods. Based on the report, I believe it was fairly accurate. Sometimes it doesn't look pretty, but at least we're addressing it. So I commend the council and the manager for all the work that was put in place even before I got elected. So I'm very happy to, as we said, move it and add on those other items.
Josh, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, nope. Good conversation. And I'm happy to vote yes and kick that off.
And I'm just going to add my comment. We, I sat in on the CZB meetings from the very start. And as what Councilman Gatto did point out, what we're doing now is working so small, it almost looks like it's not working at all. We need to take a broader brush into doing this. CZB said, you know, we can take care of the problem, just give us $850 million and we can attack the whole city at once. Whoa. I've dug deep in my wallet, I haven't seen $850 million. I don't think I'll see any with the one cent tax. So we got to start somewhere. I mean, this is going to be a great start. It's going to be a method that we can get moving on this rather than sitting around and still talking about it next year and the year after. That's what I ran on too, Connie, is improving the neighborhoods. If you're not going to do that, then you better get somebody else in there to get it done because that's what our neighbors want. They want our improvements and they want to keep living in a city that's constantly improving. I think this is probably the best start we've got. So I'm going to support that as well. And Josh, you've already voted yes?
Yep.
Mayor Protem, as you're voting, I would like to also add that as a bold initiative, we also need bold leadership and we have that with an Amber Lynch as well. And so she will obviously be starting this initiative out as the interim director and then they present it to the board to make that decision. So I thank Amber for all her work the last couple of years as well.
Good call, yeah. She wasn't keeping me in line, I'd have been all over the place. Great job, Amber.
I know we voted, it's not action, but I would, I would like the manager to maybe think of a way for us to uniquely recognize publicly the investment from Polk County, manager Wondro, and the elected officials. That's a game changer to have their support. And I'm not quite sure the best way to do that, but, you know, this, let's think of something really special to do on their behalf.
That's a good idea. And I also want to thank Amber for all the work too that she did. So I'm glad you called her out because she understands our neighborhoods and has been great to work with throughout this process.
Absolutely.
I just have to say, I think Amber worked on my neighborhood plan, how many years ago? Ten years ago and it was like your first plan. So I'm still pretty proud of that, that you did such a great job with that.
Six yes.
Well, that was the final item here. I see a couple of people saying, were you here for something or just the entertainment value?
Energy value. Oh, and Mr. Joe, you are the sassy one with the manabob.
Josh has always said, Josh is the...
Did you hear that, manabob?
No, what?
Are you still on, Josh?
With that, this meeting's adjourned.
I am still on. What was that?
Go to bed.
Yeah.
Go to bed, yes. I need to. It's almost three o'clock here.
Man, that was fun. Thank you. Long time since I...